Okay, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, July eighth. I'd like to call the meeting to order and our clerk will provide a roll call.
Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Nold.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. Um, we have an invocation with Mr. Formod, however, he's not here this morning. So if you please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. None. Um, approval of the agenda. For a motion to approve today's agenda.
Uh, well, we need an executive session for that. We were just talking about the.
Um, sorry, I'm looking because our timeline. Unless we want to come back after our nuisance tour.
Um. We can do it next week, I guess.
Okay. So we'll do that next week, but maybe you can put that. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. The consent agenda has the commission meeting minutes for last week, July first, um, twenty twenty-five, and then our finance director review.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, so there's no payroll this week. Uh, the expense total for Wednesday, July ninth is nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, one thirty-five eighty-five. It's larger, but there's, um, there's three items that we approved last week that is encompassed in that total. So you approved them last week. They got put into AP run for tomorrow. So that was a hundred eighty-nine thousand for the jail AC unit, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the bond payments together, and about eighty-three thousand for Bourbon Road Culvert. So you take those out of the equation, it's about two hundred thousand. Um, and there were no credit cards.
For a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Keep moving.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes. Three to zero. All right, new, uh, sorry, no, that's too soon. Uh, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, uh, I feel like our visit with the rec, um, ASAF, um, the YMCA, all parties interested in that. Uh, I feel like it went well. Um, it's important to us to get that ironed out. We will uh, get it figured out and, uh, but the input we, that we received from, from that group was uh, wonderful and I I look forward to working with them all to get this figured out, so. I, I thought the meeting went well, but I thought some of the proposals afterwards were not collaborative. So I hope that we can be more on that note in the future, but, uh, let's see what happens. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, I had a Northeast Kansas multi-county health board meeting last night in Horton. Um, so that was, that was good. That's all I got. No proclamations today, so new business. We have Mark Zeltner, Finance Director, consideration of purchase order for a road and bridge facility.
Yeah, so I was sent this, um, to have you guys approve. It was from PEC, Professional Engineering Consultants. Um, it was for core drilling on the ground at the road and bridge facility site, which I believe is called a GeoTech or from GeoTech. It's for eighty-one hundred dollars even. And so this purchase order is made out to be paid from the senior village sale proceeds.
I think, um, I was, before I call for a motion on this, it, it was brought to me again, and I forgot about it, um, at the Farm Bureau State Dinner about having a local committee, maybe, you know, three people from, one from each of our districts or something, uh, of professionals to sit on a committee for, like a advisory, thank you, um, for this facility project. Um, and so I just wanted to bring that back up for us to discuss because I think that's a really great idea. Um, I think it's really great. We have a lot of good resources in our community and professionals that um, would allow our director to lean on for, hey, what do you think about this? Right? Like, um, so, um, that's something maybe we could put out, um, advertising, you know, a person, the city does it all the time with their, their advisory groups and boards and different things. And I think for a facility of this magnitude, having, having that local, uh, support would be, be wonderful. So just wanted to bring that up.
I think we can discuss.
Okay. Uh, so I'd look for a motion to approve this purchase order as presented by our finance director, um, in the amount of eighty-one hundred dollars out of the senior village sale proceeds. The P E's.
She'll move.
Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. Um, I guess I have one question.
I can try.
Um, so the core drilling, that is re- a requirement?
It was, uh, it, it came from BG Consultants that said it needs to be done. I don't know the specifics of why it needs to be done. I can also say that they were here in the area doing the core drilling for Ottawa Road. So they were here doing Ottawa Road, so they did it while they were here to save a, another transport fee.
Okay.
Um, but I don't know why it's required.
Okay. Um, so it's been done?
Yes.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes, uh, all those opposed, same sign. Motion passes two to one.
I will ask Joe to send the commission a, a email saying why it was required. I can.
And I would love to know those things and, and be able to approve them before it happens, um, because it's kind of like we're stuck now. It's been done, so.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, no, just to expand a little bit more on, on that is, it was a suggestion, um, that we had some type of a committee or something. And looking back at our previous projects, um, when, you know, we have department heads with job descriptions with a lot of responsibilities and then asking them to be also in charge of a separate project, um, I just think sometimes it's outside of the scope of the job description and having that, those liaisons or professionals within the county serve as advi- on an advisory committee. I don't see any negatives when you weigh the pros and cons as far as that goes.
What would they be deciding?
I don't think it would be deciding. Yeah, it'd be like, so say, say in District Two, there's a local engineer, right? Like, that just has a job and but understands some of the things behind it. So we could like lean on them of, hey, what do you think about this? Or it would just basically be three experts or people qualified within the county to sit on an advisory committee to advise, um, either us or.
Be available to, if there's a question, or are they actively like overseeing? I mean, looking for stuff. You know, that's, or, and another thing I had a thought of was if something comes up, is that going to slow us, slow you down? Because, oh, we better run it by that committee before we do it. So is it going to have to, see, that's what, um, when you've got things where like this was done, it's done, you know, and we're paying for it now, but it's like, then if it's going to slow it down even more, if it's going to go through a committee, uh, do you lose that opportunity to, well, they're in the area, we can have them do it? Or does it everything going to have to be ran through the committee? I, I, just the way I'm thinking of it.
No, I get it. And I guess it makes sense to me because hindsight, we had a project with a department head and that was in charge of it. And then hindsight now, like going to that project site and hearing some of the feedback from that department head of, I don't know why it was done this way. Well, you know what I mean? They were in charge of the project, so that's why it was done that way. So I just think it's good for all of us to have, you know, a team of, you know, one person, you know, expert from each one of our districts as an advisory committee to where if we don't know something, right? Like, we're like, hey, what do you think about this? You're the expert, you know, kind of give, give some advice on it. Um, I don't.
Has this been posed to Joe yet? We ran it by him to see what his thoughts on that would be?
Yeah, totally.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying.
Yeah, well, and I forgot it was reiterated to me again. And so I just, reading that, I was like, oh, gosh, I forgot to bring that up. So, yeah, let's talk about that and maybe we can put on next week's agenda. Okay, ten. All right. How, let's see. How long did you need for an attorney client? Because I have fifteen minutes.
That would be enough.
Okay. So let's just do that. Are you okay with that, Eric?
Mm-hmm.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Campbell?
Let's do it.
Okay. That way we.
Fifteen minutes.
Yep. And then our, uh, next one will be April Swartz, our audit, um, will be here as long as there's nothing we need to cover before that. Okay, thank you.
Um, just three commissioners and.
Yep.
All moved at the Board of County Commissioners recessing to executive session at ten thirteen AM for top consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B two. And that, the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners and county councilor.
Well, second, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes. All right, we are back in open session and we will have April Swartz with Varney and Associates with our twenty twenty-four audit report. Hi, how are you?
How are you guys?
Good.
I don't know, it feels like a holiday and I took the day off yesterday to take my grandkids to Wichita, so I feel like I've been gone for a while and it's only been for a piece.
This feels really up close.
Yeah, I think I ever set up here.
And you're ready for me?
Uh, yes, ma'am. And we have a new commissioner, Commissioner Campbell.
Nice to meet you. That was my mother's maiden name, was Campbell.
Oh.
My brother's middle name, so.
Good for you.
And we have a new county clerk, yeah, Susan.
So we met briefly when we were here for the audit, yeah.
Okay, good. Awesome.
All right, well, I'm going to start with, uh, the special procedures that we did. You should have gotten a copy of it. It's two-page. Uh, because you spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal money this year, uh, you were required to have additional procedures. You didn't have to have a full single audit because the COVID money, the CSL FRF money was what pushed you over. So we were able to do the limited procedures, but what that looks like is we select a sample of those expenditures, we go and we test it for two things, um, was it an allowable, allowable activity and was it allowable cost? And so we did that. We didn't see anything that looked, um, out of line. So that's the clean report that then gets uploaded to the federal website. All right, then we're going to look at the audit itself. Uh, page one is of course the auditor's opinion. Um, you're new to government, so maybe I'll talk a little bit about the fact that, uh, you use the regulatory basis of accounting, which is essentially the cash basis. So the first two paragraphs, uh, deal with generally accepted accounting principles, which you don't follow, and that's why it says adverse. So the third paragraph is your clean opinion that we feel your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, based on the K-MAG basis of accounting regulatory basis. And then if you'll turn to page three, this is the actual financial statement. Your county has a lot of funds. And it looks like maybe you're closing some because some of these have little bitty ins and outs that maybe they're going to go away. I don't know, but.
Those are the, um, the old levied funds.
Okay, that still are collecting a little bit. So down the left-hand side of your, of page three, four, and five are all the funds that your county uses to record the transactions, uh, during the year. So we start with your beginning unencumbered cash balance. We add in your receipts for the year by fund, your expenditures by fund, and then your ending unencumbered cash, which is your amount then to carry forward for your budget for the next year. We add back any outstanding accounts payable and, uh, incomparances to come to your reconciled book balance at the end of the year by fund. So if you scan down that unencumbered cash column, there were a few funds that had negative cash at the end of the year. Uh, the joint communication was negative. Um, the special motor vehicle was negative. Um, on the next page, there's one near the bottom, juvenile intake was negative, and then the solid waste was negative. Um, so those, that would need to be corrected. You're not allowed to have negative cash in those funds, so that's actually cited back in the back as, as a statute violation. Um, and then if you turn to page five, we can look at in total, you, you have a question on that?
Yes, do you mind if I ask a question?
No, please jump in.
So with solid waste and joint communications being funded by sales tax, sometimes the tax, like their expenditure, the tax is collected monthly, and so we will go into the negative, but then it catches up and then they make a transfer. So in the meantime, I guess I'm just trying to understand to be in compliance, you would then have to transfer money from your general fund to cover that?
Or wait for the expenditures or pay an expenditure out of the general fund instead of solid waste?
Okay.
Because the only, uh, there is an exception for negative funds. If you have a federal grant that you are expecting reimbursement from,
Okay.
you are allowed to go in the red, but there really isn't any other exception. Now, it's not a big deal. No one at the state's going to say a thing about it. It's just a footnote in the financial, but it's just something to keep in mind that you want to regulate those expenditures, so you're not going in the red. And again, if you feel like you have to spend it and you want to spend it there, transfer some money over from general, and then you could always transfer it back.
Okay, thank you.
When those sales tax monies come.
Thank you.
All right. So then if you look at the bottom, you started your year with six million eight hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. You took in twenty-eight million, twenty-five thousand. You expended twenty-eight million, six seventy-one, leaving you with unencumbered cash of six million, one sixty-two, nine seventy-eight. Um, your reconciled book balance was six million, four forty-two, oh, eighty-six. And if you look down below, you can see, uh, you have eighteen-five in checking and exchange. You had about one point three in CDs, a little savings. Uh, you had some CDs at UMB, uh, CDs at Bank of Atchison Union State, and then the inmate fund, the law library, um, and then cash on hand at the end of that last day of business. Um, that gives you twenty-two million, six twenty-one, but a big chunk of that belongs to the taxpayers. That's money they've paid in that you're going to distribute. And so you can see we backed that off, that sixteen million, one seventy-nine, leaving you with the county's cash of six million, four forty-two, oh, eighty-six. If you go, and I'm not sure how easy that is to do on your PDF, but if you go to the, uh, if you will go to page forty-three, which is the post to the back, that gives you a detail of what that sixteen million is, but fifteen point eight of that is your funds that you've collected on behalf of taxpayer, so you'll distribute. But if you wanted to see where that comes from, it comes from back there.
On which page? I'm sorry.
Forty-three in your, I'm not sure what page it is in the PDF. It's called Schedule Three, Agency Funds, yes.
Second or third from the last.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
And you can see up there at the top, that's your tax, your distributable funds, uh, that you've collected in tax. And then if you look down, there's some other subdivision, there's a drainage, drainage districts have a little bit of cash, uh, then you have some other agency funds. And then down below are your outside funds, like your law library, your clerk withholding account, and the inmate fund that are also considered um, agency funds, so that money is not county money. So that's where that sixteen million, one seventy-nine, one oh-three comes from, that we subtract out of that page, uh, five.
And just to clarify, um, your recap of the six million dollars after taxpayer dollars are adjusted, um, because you used the word cash, and one of the things we were just, um, deciphering the difference of is the treasurer has investments.
That's all part of this.
That's all part of this, um, but our actual cash reserve was roughly half a million.
Well, depends on what you're considering your reserve.
Okay.
I mean, this is the county's cash.
Okay.
Now, if you want to look at certain accounts and determine what you think are reserves, um, because you do have some, like, special, uh, road and bridge money, you've got, um, some things that I would consider, like your special highway fund is definitely not, that's your operating, but you have a good chunk in there. Um, I'm looking for like capital outlay or anything like that, that you would have set aside.
Okay.
Capital improvement. So under your capital projects, you've got a solid waste capital improvement, a joint communications capital improvement, noxious weed. Those would all be money set aside. That's at the top of page five.
Okay.
There's like five funds right there that I would probably consider to be reserves.
Okay.
Um, and then you do have your large one point three million sitting in your senior village sale, and I'm not sure what your plan is with that, but maybe that, that some of that gets moved to reserves.
Okay. Um, so what is a good number?
There really isn't.
What do you, what do you have a suggestion?
There really isn't a good number or suggestion. It all depends on um, what projects you have planned and what your, you know, what you're, what you plan to do in the future. It's just hard to say. I mean, in the rule of thumb, you say you want at least three months operating, but in a government, that seems not enough. Um, so, you know, when I look at some of these funds, like your general fund, it, it, to me, your general fund's pretty low. Um, you know, you only, in fact, last year, your general fund was negative. Um, this year it is better. It's at one ninety-four, but to me, that's not real beefy because general fund is where you can spend anything you want to spend. Um, and yes, you've got some funds in other places, but, um, when I look at this, none of this looks super beefy. I mean, you do have some reserves, but, um.
And then one point three has been allocated to another capital project, so that.
So it's going to be spent.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. So, yeah, I mean, you've just got to be cognizant, and I'm, I'm not sure what your plan is on your budget this year, if you plan to exceed the R and R, or if you're going to have to exceed the R and R in order to do what you need to do. But again, that's another consideration because cash carryforward has a direct effect on the mill levy, as you know, because if your cash carryforward is higher, your mill levy is lower. Um, so having some cash helps, um, in that situation.
So as far as a rule of thumb of a percentage, you don't really.
No.
Okay. Because it, it's really interesting when we go to like Kansas Association of Counties. It's all over the board.
That's what I'm saying. It's all over because every county is so different.
Some of that.
The number of roads, yeah, the number of roads you have to maintain. All the, every county is different. And, you know, our job as auditors is to audit your financial statement, um, so giving that kind of, um, advice or whatever is really outside the purview of what we do, because we would need to know, you know, what is your future plan and what are you doing with your budget and what are your plans and all of that?
No, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, so then the next several pages of the audit report are the footnotes, which I won't read to you. Uh, but there were no new ones this year, but they do, they are required and they do give the reader a better understanding of the counting and the policies that you follow. Um, I want to go to the debt page. If you go to page twelve, I don't know what page it is in the PDF, but Mark can tell you maybe.
They follow it through pretty good.
Oh, good. Okay. So, um, in the, on page twelve, this is a summary of your debt. So at the beginning of the year, your outstanding debt was four million, three sixty-six, three eighty-six. You had two general obligation bonds that totaled two million, eight forty. You have a, that twenty sixteen refunding tax revenue bond was at nine forty-seven. And then you have, uh, you had three financing leases at the beginning of the year, and then you added a new lease during the year. That was the only new debt. A new lease for a track loader of three hundred and ten thousand. So then if you go over to the next to the last column, you can see at the end of the year, uh, your debt is now three million, six seventy-seven, eight fifty-four. You made principal payments of about a million dollars and interest of hundred and forty-one, two. Um, and then down below just shows the maturities of the debt. All right, now if you'll turn to page fourteen, this is the, uh, page that demonstrates your compliance with the budget law. We had a ton of funds on the first page. This, you don't have very many budgeted funds. So these are your budgeted funds. These are the ones that are mill levy supported um, in some way. Some of these are, not all of them. Um, and so you can see down the right-hand column. Uh, you had one, one fund that was over twenty-nine dollars. Your home for the agent was over by twenty-nine dollars. We didn't even cite that, but, um, everything else was under budget uh, for the year of, to the tune of three point seven nine oh, oh, three eight. Under budget. With the bulk of that being in the Atchison Senior Village, which is probably because you sold it and it ceased operation and all of that. All right, then starting on page fifteen is where we go into each individual fund, and I'm just going to go through the general fund, uh, to give you reference of how they're laid out. The general fund's the largest fund, so it has multiple pages. The page fifteen is your revenue for the general fund. Um, you can see there, uh, you actually took in thirty-four thousand less, uh, money than what you had budgeted to bring in. So part of that is probably your transfers in, you budgeted, you were going to transfer in five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, you only transferred in three sixty-three for whatever reason, and maybe, maybe there weren't funds to transfer in, so you didn't do it. But your interest on idle funds actually exceeded expectation, which we've seen across the board, just due to the better rates that are out there. Um, I would highly encourage you to market those investments and make sure you're getting, you know, get your local banks to compete on the rate they're giving you, and you can use the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool as a tool. Because they, they will, a lot of times will match the rate that the KMAP is offering. The KMAP is super simple. You sign up for it, you, it's all electronic. You can deposit, you can withdraw daily if you need to. Um, it's not like it puts a lot of extra work on administration to use the KMAP. But again, it is a good tool for getting a better rate of interest from your local banks, which I know we all like to keep the money locally because it helps everyone, but again, they need to be fair about what they're paying. I always feel like my sister was a banker and I say, well, you don't mind charging the high rate, but you don't want to pay me the high rate, which is the banker.
Oh.
All right, then if you go to start on page sixteen, we have the expenses of the general fund, and the general fund is one of the only funds that has departments, and so you'll see a lot of different, uh, departments. The budget law applies to the fund in total. So on page sixteen, I always pick on commissioners because you always come up first. You were actually under budget. Your expenses were eighty-five, one fifty-three. Your budget was ninety thousand, two fifteen. You were under budget by five thousand, sixty-two. But then if you look down, you can see, we're going to pick on the new county clerk. She was over budget, but that's okay. It's not a violation.
It wasn't me.
Okay. It's not a violation, um, but it is good management to stay within your budget. And so when you look down through the departments, you can use that as a management tool to determine, you know, where are we not staying under budget? And where, where can we do better? Because when you get to the very last page of the general fund, which is on page nineteen, you can see that overall the general fund was under budget by three hundred and forty thousand, eight eighty-nine. Um, so no budget violation, um, but again, just something to keep in mind. Because if somebody goes over, then somebody else, you know, has got to give up the slack, even though we know we budget more than we're going to spend. We do. There is built-in, uh, room for adjustment. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
All right, then the next page is where they start all the individual funds, the smaller funds, and I'm not going to go through those, but here's what, like Noxious Weed only gets one page. Um, and essentially it gives you more detail than that first page that shows you where that revenue comes from and then where the expenditures, uh, went. How you spent the money. Any questions on that? All right, you guys are easy this morning. All right. And then finally, the governance letter. So last year, we talked about some things, and I feel like we came back this year and we're still talking about some things, and some of them are the same things that we talked about last year. And if you'll turn to the last page of the governance letter. Uh, we have four items that we've mentioned, um, that we have concern about. Um, the daily statement does not appear to be being done daily. Um, I know there was some, there were some health issues in the treasurer's office this year, but we had this problem last year as well. And as of this morning, I think the most recent daily statement that's been submitted to the clerk was July first, and we're at July eighth. So again, we're still behind. Um, what worries me about that is when you don't keep that stuff timely, then Mark is having to do extra work in Excel spreadsheets to track where the county's at because until the daily statement goes over to the clerk's office, that stuff can't be entered and used in CIC. And so that becomes an issue, um, and it also can cause errors. Uh, Mark is very good, but when you're using. Uh, Mark is very good, but when you're using Excel spreadsheet, it can create errors. The other concern we heard from department heads is they don't always know where they're at on their budget because we're behind on getting the daily statements input. So no one knows exactly where they're at budget wise. Um, as an auditor, my concern is, you know, you, you, accounting has to be done timely. And they call it a daily statement for a reason. I understand things happen and it's not going to always be daily, but I feel like they really, we, you really need to stress that that gets done. Um. On the bank reconciliation, and this relates to the daily statement, there are a lot of uncleared items that are errors or unknown differences that have not been corrected. Mark knows the difference and we can reconcile and we know there are things that are either not in bank or not in book. But again, it's because we're not keeping up with the daily work. So technically you actually had about two hundred thousand more dollars in cash than what your financials show. But we couldn't prove that because we don't have the detail by fund of what makes up, up those outstanding items. My understanding is that Mark and Connie are going to meet in July to try to get those things cleaned up. But I would strongly suggest that, that you get those cleaned up. Any questions on that? Uh, the quarterly treasurer's report. So there's a statute that requires the treasurer to publish in their local paper, a treasurer's report each quarter. And that has not been done for, I think she said, maybe the last two, at least two, maybe three years. She got behind and didn't do it, and then she just hasn't done it. So there actually can be a daily fine, and I believe it's. Hundred and fifty dollars a day for not filing your quarterly statement. Uh, again, no one's going to assess that probably, but it's important that we, you know, file a quarterly statement. Um, back to the daily statements, one more comment on the daily statement. Um. We, when we looked at the daily statement at the end of the year, so I don't know if any of you've seen the daily statement, but basically at the bottom, it lists all, it shows the activity. And then at the bottom, it shows all the bank accounts. It says by fund, this is how much money we have by fund. And then at the bottom, this is how much we have by bank. And then the two tie, that's the reconciliation. The problem is, it appears to me, and I could be wrong, it appears to me that all we're doing is changing the top account number. Because there was a bank account listed on the daily statement at December thirty-first that has been closed for over a year. It's the ARPA fund account. It's been closed, but it's still being listed as part of your cash. So I think it appears to me what's happening is whatever number we need, we're adjusting that top bank account to match because those other numbers are not accurate. And again, not only is it late, it's inaccurate. So when I asked Connie why that account was on there, she said, I have no idea why she's putting that on there. But as the treasurer, she really should understand the daily statement and how it balances. So we, we just have some concern there, um. Around all of that. The fact that your county has a finance director is probably the only reason we were able to complete the audit. Because he can pull the things together, because otherwise there's no one to do that. Um, we, we don't get good cooperation from Connie and we don't get timely cooperation from Connie. And, um, she's new and we, we don't know the relationship there, but really, we really didn't have much interaction with Michelle before. Because really Mark handles the things out of that office for us. And then finally, the depository coverage, although you were covered at the end of the year, it still doesn't appear that's being tracked daily. And the reason I feel like that's the case is when we sent the bank confirmations to you guys to complete, for Mark and Connie to complete. First of all, we don't ask that they put accounts on there. We just say sign it and send it back, but Connie didn't send hers back. So she filled them all out and listed all of her CDs and sent it to the bank. Well, when the bank sent them back, they're like, well, this CD was. Cat, the CD was redeemed, this CD's not there anymore, and now it's this CD and this CD. So to me, she's, she doesn't know what the balance of the CDs are at December thirty-one. Nor does she know what CDs are outstanding. Which is very concerning because she should know, she should know on a daily basis if she has enough coverage. And if we don't even know what our CD balances are at year end, I don't know how you can know you have adequate coverage. So, and I don't mean to just be miss now, negative Nellie over here, but these things just really concern us as auditors. You know, and even in continuing to be the auditor, because unless some of this stuff can get cleaned up, it may, puts us in a really bad position as to the risk that we're facing when. Things aren't being addressed.
You say adequate coverage?
Coverage. So at the end of the year, every day of the year, uh, there either needs to be F D I C pledging in place, which is two fifty per bank, two hundred fifty thousand per bank. And then the bank pledges securities for the difference. Um, and so it's the treasurer's responsibility to make sure that the bank has adequate pledging in place and that the, it covers the balances. Especially during the peak periods, uh, December to February, when the people are paying their taxes and then again in April, May. But it is a statute that is daily that's supposed to be checked. And we did provide a spreadsheet. Uh, last year where it, you can easily plop in your CDs and your bank balances and then compare it to your report you're getting from your bank to make sure you're covered. But what Connie told me this year was that I just look at it every day and make sure it's okay. So. So there's no evidence that anybody's looking at it, and I'm not sure who could look at it if she happened to have to be gone. So there needs to be something in place where you know that you're protecting the public's money.
Can you help give suggestions, um. On, on behalf of like a county commissioner of what we should ask to see. Um, because I'm, I'm taking notes and I'm taking it all in, but this is all new for us because we've never, um. And we've never required, like, asked for it, but, but maybe this is something that we just know we put on our agenda, you know. I don't know if it should be weekly to make sure, you know, we, we see copies of, of daily statements or, or, um. CD listings, maybe monthly to know where our balances are, um, and then.
And yeah, we can email you some suggestions. I would say asking for the depart, depository coverage spreadsheet, at least monthly would be great. Um, I think the daily statement, I think, yeah, I mean, every week, let's ask the clerk, what's the date of the last daily statement we received? And you'll know whether the daily statements are current, but I would actually ask to see a daily statement so you can see what I'm talking about at the bottom where the banks are listed.
Sorry, I thought I had another question, um, based on that.
And as far as, and maybe the bank reconciliations, um, and Mark can be very helpful in that regard too, because I feel like. You know, he's doing recs and recs are being reviewed. We're doing them at multiple places, but like those outstanding items that need to be cleaned up. I mean, let's ask every week, are those cleaned up yet? Because those need to, that's, that needs to be cleaned. That's two hundred thousand dollars and that's not a small chunk of change.
I thought of my other question. So I didn't bring them down from our mailbox yet today, but we, every commission meeting, we get. A packet of expenditures that we sign off on. And there's a summary sheet showing each fund, um, and very frequently that sales tax fund is negative. Um, that pretty much seems like weekly. So we acknowledge that in our meeting and ask the question of like, hey, these are negatives. And then we get the answer, well, it just hasn't been. Um, we haven't collected yet, or, you know, it hasn't been updated. But to your point on that statute, is that just at the year end?
No, it's every day.
Okay. So when we're signing off on the negatives, we're actually should be transferring to cover.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or just don't be spending until the funds come in.
Or have.
But I wonder, and maybe Mark can answer to this. I don't know if it's because the sales tax is coming in later or just not getting recorded because the daily statements are behind.
So there was a, this year specifically. A lot of the transactions got expensed at the front, like heavily in January, February. Um, well, we'll, when you only bring in a hundred and eighty thousand. A month, but you're spending four hundred thousand, it's going to take some time to recoup that. But then you're also spending monthly too. So every time you bring in one eighty, but you're spending a hundred, you only have an eighty to eat it up. So it, it's just going to take time.
And when you get those reports, do, do, do they get budget? Like when you're approving those expenditures?
No, they don't. They get a, a cash activity that shows the ending cash after.
Okay.
The expenses.
Because if they did get a budget one, it would most likely be not accurate anyway, because we're behind on the daily statement.
So this one that she's going to show you is actually a lot closer than it has been.
So, yeah, so this is what we're signing off on. And, and so you can see they're all, that they're negative. And so I just want to make sure as a commissioner that we know. The rules and can stay in compliance and, and then before we sign it, say, no, we are not signing this. It needs to be, we need to have a transfer or we need to have something. To make sure that we all know how to stay in.
And the joint communication, why is it so, what, and like even with solid waste is really negative.
Those are the two sales tax.
Those are where they're waiting on the sales tax funds to come in, but we're still spending because, well, for solid waste, you've got to pay to do the things you do. Um, the, the thing to think about though, if you're going to make transfers to cover this, there's a couple. Ways to think about it. If you're going to make a transfer, you have to have budget room to make a transfer. So when you're doing your budget, make sure you're leaving room for some transfers, which you had. What if it's two million over, uh, what'd you have in general? How much over were you, or under budget?
Three hundred and forty something.
So, yeah, so you're going to need budget room to make those transfers. The other thing would be, um, you could make the expenditures out of the general fund until you receive the. But I'm really shocked by this report because why does it say the general fund has six million dollars when we know it has about a hundred ninety-eight thousand? Unless it does now.
Would, would, are you seeing?
I'm seeing cash balance.
So this is the cash like before. So this may be when this was ran seven, seven, this was the cash on seven, six.
So you prob, so you probably had in the general fund. But, but the general fund only had two hundred thousand.
Ending.
Right. So the. How did you go from two hundred thousand to six million in the general fund? Do we have some huge collection that in the general?
Six months, seven months in. Is that what you're popping about?
You see what I'm saying? I mean, if you ended the year with a hundred and nine, you ended last year with a hundred and ninety-eight thousand in your general fund, hundred ninety-four. Okay. And now you're telling me the general fund has six million in it?
I mean, I'd have to.
That just doesn't seem log reasonable to me because I don't know what that revenue would be. Your taxes you're collecting would be in your agency funds. So. Maybe we can look at that later. Just look at, like, run a P and L, run a revenue expense report for general and let's see. Why that, because if you had that much in your general, man, I'd feel a lot better because then you've got plenty of room to cover these things. But when I say pay it out of the general fund and you only have a hundred ninety-four thousand, then you can't pay it out of the general. So, so I don't really understand this, but Mark and I can look at it after the fact and see what possibly could have made that. Number so huge. I just can't imagine what it was. I hope it's legit. Yes, but I don't know. So yes, when you're looking at that and it shows a negative cash balance, that should not be, but I don't know how you're going to fix that all at once, because if these are expenditures you have to make. And you're, until you get yourself in a position where you're ahead, I don't know what you're going to do. But the cash basis law does say you cannot be negative in the red at any day of the year in any fund, other than a federal grant fund.
Thank you.
I know none of this is the news you like to hear, but I mean.
But it's good for us to know because again, if we don't know how to hold ourselves accountable.
I know.
Then we can't help others and, and everybody on this team wants to do the best job for everybody in the county. It's just, everybody has their unique job and, and bringing us all together to know like, okay, this is the commissioner's job to hold ourselves accountable is to ask X, Y, and Z. And then it'll help everyone, right?
Yep. That's right. Because the buck stops right here. I mean, in the end, the buck stops here. And it's difficult because you don't have a lot of control over department, I mean, over elected officials. I mean, I don't know who does, whether it's attorney general or who does, I don't, I don't know. Um. It puts you in a very difficult position and you're not the only county we see it in. I mean, there's, and then when you have strife between elected officials or offices. You know, there's got to be, in order for it to be a great team, you got to have cooperation with everyone and, and I feel like there's a struggle there too, maybe. So. Um. Those are my concerns as your auditor. Um. Any questions?
So is there a, I, I know you and Mark are going to get your heads together about this, but is there follow-up tasks beyond next year? Or like, is there something, I guess, we hear you, we see, and then it's our job from here till next year's audit to correct these things? Or is there a follow-up period to say, you know, we've done X, Y, and Z?
I would, I would really, in order to say that I am willing to audit next year or the twenty-five, I would really like to see the bank stuff cleaned up. Um, I think that's very important, uh, because I feel it puts everyone at risk when we don't have our banks reconciled and balanced, um, on a timely basis. And yes, we have a three-year agreement with you, but as you know, you can step away from the agreement at any time. And so can we if we feel like the risk is too high for us to do the work? Um, we don't want to do that and I'm not threatening that. I'm just saying. When I came here this morning, the whole way here, I'm trying to figure out what I want to do and I feel like let's give it a chance. Let's try to get it. I know Mark had said he and Connie had, were scheduling something in July to sit down and clean that stuff up. So if that happens, I would feel a lot better about moving into the twenty-five year. And I will work with Mark and look at that and see, you know, why that, I, I'm sure there's an explanation. It's probably the way the reports run. C I C has lots of ways you can run a report. So I'm sure it's fine. I didn't mean to cause concern there. It just seemed like a really big number and I'm wishing you had that number. So let's just go take it one step at a time, but I think making sure your data statements are timely and that we are cleaning up those bank recs.
Okay.
Is the main, my main concern.
As a commissioner and we want to ask for. This information and it contains sensitive material, bank, uh, statements and, uh, numbers and that, how do we? Get that, but then not, I mean, to risk the security.
The daily statement doesn't have any bank account numbers on it. Okay. So you can ask for that daily statement and the daily statement, and I don't know if we even have one that we could show them how, at the bottom. It will list all the bank accounts.
I don't know if any of those envelopes, they come in envelopes like that. I don't know if that's a mail or it does or. No, that's not it. That's not them.
So the daily statement will say, you know, these, this is how much money we started the day with. This is what we've taken in. This is what we've spent. And this is our ending cash. And then our cash is here. Here's all of our bank accounts that that cash ties to. Um, and the top part is by fund and then the bottom is by bank account. So what I would look for is, are these numbers changing? For number one, if that ARPA account is still on there, and I don't know if it is, do you know? If that ARPA account is still on there, we know. Are you reading my mind up there? Come on, this is weird. Okay, so. But the little envelope, I guess I was talking about the little envelope where we list all the bank accounts at the bottom. Is really what I wanted to show them, but this shows the transactions for the day, the cash by all funds and then your banks and investments. But there's an, there's another piece that goes with it that shows it by bank. And so I would say you want to make sure these are coming over daily. So this is the most recent one they have, which is July one. I know there was a holiday in there, but that, so it's a week, we're a week behind at this point. Um. Make sure they're done daily. And again, utilize Mark because Mark knows the numbers. He knows the bank accounts. He can look at the stuff and he can direct you. On what you're seeing and getting you what you need. Um. Correct?
I think you also made a comment about you didn't know. If Connie was incapacitated, who else had access to that? Is there, I mean, does that, that would have to stay within the office, wouldn't it?
Well, within the county, um, I would assume a deputy treasurer is trained on all things deputy, all things treasurer. I don't know that for a fact. But that would be the intent was that if something would happen to Connie, that the deputy could step in and do her job or someone could. Um. Uh, well, actually, it's actually just on this side right here. Oh, so you see it, the, here's your daily statement and see at the bottom how it lists all the bank accounts. Is there still an account on there called ARPA? It might've gotten removed after we were here. Okay.
I've seen enough of it.
Okay. So maybe they've corrected that. So that's. Okay, that's as far, is it? Yeah. So that, that account's been closed for a year. So how can they be reconciling if that account doesn't exist? So that's wrong. That, that, is it like eight or nine thousand? Yeah. So that, that money doesn't exist in that account. So that daily statement is wrong. Um, and I, my guess is in order to balance that top number, the big account is what gets adjusted each day to make it appear to be balanced.
Beginning balance.
Well, that, uh, down here, so like if you do your beginning balance and you've got your transactions, I think this account is probably getting adjusted. I don't think the CDs, if we took maybe the seven days prior, you could scan easily and see, are any of these numbers changing? Because really theoretically, most of them should be, uh, your CDs may be not daily, but like your self-insurance funds probably changing. This sparks, we know is not valid. Um, we are negative in the wildlife and parks fund, which why are we overdrawn? Um, so those are the things I would be looking at these.
Okay.
So. And the thing is, is now here's your comp of cash. When you look at the comp of cash, it doesn't give it by account, but this is another report that's in that file. But this is another report that's in that file. And so the grand total cash ties to this little envelope. But you can't tell on there what accounts at each bank are included. That's a C I C report, which is a good report. But again, the breakdown is at the bottom of the little envelope by account. So does it make sense what we're trying to do on the daily statement?
Yeah.
I'm comparing this yellow.
Yeah, I think the total matched. If it was at thirteen, yeah, I feel like the total was close. Does it match?
Yeah, the, the total at the end, yes.
Right.
Total available cash is matching.
So it matches. And so over here, it's just by bank where on your envelope, it's by account. And so that's why I'm saying in total, the cash may be right, but obviously we're not balancing each account because we know that our money's been gone. Or spark's been gone. So if you took that out, that balance has to go somewhere.
While you're here, I also want just to show you, so like in twenty-four, our O O one general. So we did end two ninety-one.
Right.
But like in June, at the same time, we got a three million dollar. That's part of the distribution in June.
Yep.
Oh, like themselves next or what?
I, I, that's a problem. But it's trying to find a big transaction. I don't know. Anyway, I guess what my, my point is in June, it was four point six million.
But. So you're getting, so that's huge. So you started out with your two hundred or whatever.
So this is twenty-four.
Okay, so you ended at two ninety-one. Okay, so now.
I'm just trying to correlate in June, it's a big number as well, not.
Oh, then it was gone. Gotcha. So you're getting something.
Uh huh.
Last year though, it could have been the nursing home sale, but maybe not.
And I went into a separate.
So this year, if we look at this year, this is where we got a big chunk.
In June again.
And you, can we see what the detail is in that?
I mean, it's thousands of transactions. It's all part of.
It's big and it's in June.
There's almost three.
But what is that?
Tax.
But see, so if that's tax money coming in, that doesn't really, I mean, that tax money goes to the agency funds, not the.
But maybe it hasn't, hasn't done that yet.
So you guys run it through the general and then it goes to agency? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's all of these are.
Okay.
Interface.
All right. So let's look at that later. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I don't understand the logic behind that, but maybe that's just, and maybe that's the way it is at every county and I just only look at your end numbers. So I can look at some of our others. We have others on C I C and kind of look and see if it looks the same. Any other questions?
Now, I think our services, usually I think at county. They, there's been a way of doing things. Things are very slow to change. And so until we are directed to do something different, things stay. That's the way we've always done it. And I, I hate that. You know, that's.
It's a reality though.
But it's reality and A, we've went through audits every year. We've passed, we've passed, so it must be right. Well, they'll not say that there couldn't be a better way of doing it.
Right. And I think at year end, it's right because Mark is tracking the things that aren't getting entered and and making it right. The problem is, how many days out of the rest of the year is it right? You know, that's the thing. And there, you know, just get it caught up and do it every day. I mean, it's not that difficult. Everybody has life things we all do. But that's why someone else needs to be trained. When, when one person can't do their job, can someone else step in to do it? Um, and again, this was a holiday week. I get that. So maybe it's, maybe it's better than it was. Maybe they're coming over more frequent.
No, we appreciate the information and again, to Eric's point of like. When we know better, we'll be better. And so having guidance as commissioners of, you know, the things we need to do to make ourselves better, um, well, you know, the organization.
And again, like we said, though, the scary part is though, if it doesn't get better, what can you do? I, I, I don't know. I just don't know.
This, to me. This appears to be. Fairly easy to remedy. I, I, you know, this isn't money that's not there that you're looking for. This isn't, you know, something happening that, that is, you know, shouldn't be happening. This is just, this is a daily. You know, if I were to put a, a. A, a list of daily duties on the, but you know, and list them out, this would be. Half, half of these things would be fixed. And so.
It's a time issue, not a.
Yeah, we, we have not seen anything that would make us be concerned that there's fraud.
Sure.
Or anything like that. And I want to make sure that you understand that.
Yeah.
It's just a lack of timely attention to detail. Um.
We can, we can.
Yeah, we know what we need to do.
We can fix it.
Yeah.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
And I'll be getting um, more information to you about the uh, Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Board.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. When you said hi in the hall, I'm like, I know her.
Just the first time meeting. Yep.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Can I just leave these with you?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, uh, the national.
Open, leave it open or?
Yeah, that's fine. The National Opioid Settlement Notice, um. That came to Mrs. Bartlett and myself, and so I just forwarded to you guys. So it's on your radar.
Yeah, the uh. This settlement isn't automatic. Uh, this isn't part of the state program either. So we will have to submit a uh. A claim form by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Unfortunately, they did not give us a claim form. It was kind of a heads up that at some point in the future, you should get. A, the claim form. Um. And it should come from rubris, R U B R I S dot com. So I guess I should probably talk to Scott to make sure that. They're green lighted so that. If we get an email from. From them, we'll actually go through and won't go to spam. We, we have to do the participation form by the end of September. Or opt to file our own lawsuit, which I think is rather unlikely. If you want to do that.
I wonder why we didn't get it already.
I'm not sure it exists. I think maybe they reached an agreement and then. Said that we have to come up with the paperwork on how to handle the claims and. Instead of waiting to. Announce it, they announced it by the way.
Okay. Thank you guys for following up and keeping an eye on that. Um, the next was the America two fifty. Um, I forgot the Derek Schmidt event, uh, Mr. Mice Jonathan gave me this to bring back. Um, so if you guys are okay, um, having them put it on our social media. And then Eric, um, I didn't know if you wanted to give an update. This could be on our website and social media. Okay. Um, from your meeting last week.
Um, mainly talking about logistics, um. Of course, they were fishing for a donation, but. Um, it was non-committal because we haven't discussed that. And plus with our budget woes right now, I didn't know where we were at, but I said that I'm sure that. Without having talked with any of the department heads, anything that's, I, I think this will be a similar thing to like the Amelia Fest. So uh, traffic and things like that, uh, the EMS, I'm sure that. Those things would be handled similar to when the Amelia Fest is, I mean, like in like services and coordination. Uh, I didn't think that was going out on a limb, but I'm sure that I need to talk with the, those, I haven't talked with them yet. To just make sure that we're all on board with that. I don't think they figure it will be, this will be more of a local. Atchison County or more of a surrounding thing than drawing in, probably wouldn't be as big of crowd maybe as what. Um. The Amelia is, but it still will have to plan uh, routes and things like that, closures, anything like that. Um. I didn't have anything much. It was just more details and uh, who's doing what. And uh, they also wanted me to reach out to cities of third class and help uh, put the word out. Uh, they're planning a parade at some point, so maybe they want to participate, different entities would want to participate. I even thought about maybe the County Lake would wanna, maybe they would wanna have something in the, you know, and not limit it to just the. Four counties of the third class, but maybe any community, you know, like coming. Well, maybe they would want to do something. So that's kind of where my mind was, my mind was going, um. Uh, I think the parade is opened all, any Atchison County, and they were even wanting to kind of maybe open it up to other. Like Rushville, uh, Troy, communities that are close by that would be interested.
Nice.
It's kind of, it was an informative meeting.
Okay. Um, next we have uh, a copy. Uh, Mark Zeltner, Finance Director, had given us the proposed twenty twenty-six holidays. Um, for approval to put on our informational sheet that we would send out, um, with the R and R notices. Um, so did you guys have an opportunity to look at those?
I, I didn't see anything wrong with that. No, it's typically they are set. On our organizational meeting in January. Do, is there anything that could we put there that? I mean. Isn't that the? Time and place of record that you set those? That's what we've done, although. Uh, Martin Luther King Holiday is usually a week after our. Meeting. And so that one for sure, we've tried to set the year before so that. We don't have scrambling the week before, but.
So if we did want to send this out for constituents to utilize, there's no harm in approving it early.
There's no.
Okay. Uh, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six holiday list as presented by our finance director.
So we'll see.
Move this second and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes. Rita Zero. Um, okay, so. The YMCA proposal letter was put on here and. Uh, I was sending it to you guys more for information. Um, only that we were, and you guys talked about it in your commissioner comments, just reiterating that the county commission had. No knowledge of, of the proposal letter that had been circulating. So really no action there, just. Reiterating your comments from Commissioner Comments and.
Can you uh, print me off a copy of the uh, one from the Y? I couldn't get mine to print.
Yeah, print too. Okay.
Um, I can get that. You guys had no prior knowledge of the prior to win, I mean.
To the email.
This week was the.
Thursday.
First, last one. Uh, Nick notified me Wednesday and just talked about a document, but I was with my kiddos at a well check. So I didn't get to go until Thursday and that's when I brought it back and scanned it in. So everyone had a copy. Um, and knew what was. Um, what I said, Jimmy.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did you say you don't?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I just, I thought I hit two, but I didn't. So it was sent on. Hey, so that's good.
Hmm, thank you. Yeah.
Yep. Um, okay, well, we can distribute this. The next is an executive session eleven thirty, but we have some things to sign, so. So we got different sessions. Us. It's all happening with. Missioners and county councilor.
Okay.
Um, okay, so then we have a note from a letter that I just opened from Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Dear Commissioners enclosed as a public notice regarding a proposed Kansas water pollution control permit. For the referenced facility in your county, in accordance with K A R twenty-eight dash sixteen dash sixty-one. This notice provides interested parties an opportunity to comment on or object to the issuance of the permit as being. Public notice. Specific information concerning comments and objections is found at the end of the public no- notice. And it looks like. The Atchison one listed is. Uh. M G P I processing uh, for the Missouri River Process wastewater. And then it talks about the proposed actions consist of renewal and modification of an existing Kansas N P D E S water pollution control permit for an existing facility. The modification consists of an addition of a class one injection well to handle high nutrient wastewater. The facility produces fuel ethanol through fermentation and this desolation processes. Process wastewater treated by an activated sludge treatment system flows to a common collective pit where it combines with. Point eleven M G D average daily flow of non-contact cooling tower blowdown and boiler blowdown before an average daily flow of one point two one M G. B is discharged to White Clay Creek. Through a common outfall, zero zero one X approximately point two five nine M G D of high nutrient wastewater from the starch washing. Process is directed to a membrane filtration system before being injected in the class one well. The permit contains limits for T R C P H. Um, W E T B O D and T S S. The permit contains monitoring for temperature, apparent color phosphorus nitrate, nitrite, total nitrogen. Chloride sulfate and all the soft solids. And then there's the last page if you want to object. And there's board tax. Roll correction for personal property on trucks, motorcycles and boats. I'll continue that later. And just open this. Here's a really good example. Here's the survey that they sent. Here's a really good example, here's the survey that they sent us. Oh yeah.
We got the same one.
Yeah, so it's like, and with a. Postage necessary, so this could be, I mean, looking at other examples is always good. I'll just keep that there.
I might open mine here. Welcome to the executive session, what is that?
Um, so, um. Personnel services. Um, personnel matters on subject of non-elected wages for commissioners and county councilor. What was your early program? Attorney-client.
It's attorney-client?
No, 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 she asked about what earlier.
Oh yes, and this is who is gonna be in?
Just Commissioners and County Council.
How long?
Fifteen minutes. Let's do twenty minutes, please. No, fifteen's probably fine. Fifteen, sorry. There you go, wishy-washy, we're gonna get it done in fifteen, that's the goal. Yeah, sure.
I'll move the board of county commissioners to recess into executive session. At eleven twenty eight. A M. To discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement and those present will be. Three commissioners and the county councilor.
Well, second, it's the moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Uh, it passes three to zero. Okay, we're back from executive session. Question break, okay, and we have some time, so.
I didn't realize it left them.
It's some of that application brand. So they have one.
Yeah.
And we had. We had, we had a dress of one, it wasn't. Bleed, right?
Right.
Right, I emailed and I got that better from the meeting.
Yeah.
That one, I don't know if there's any other with us or. There's one about that from there. Just about that chair over there.
There's, there's one here under.
Hey.
You can use that, thank you.
The past Mark. Mark, you haven't seen Mark, have you? Up in the. Board's office, yeah. Oh, there you are, hi, I was gonna text you, so I was just gonna ask you after that audit meeting.
Yeah.
Um, in, in following along with compliance.
Yeah.
Uh. Should we not? Sign it without transferring, should we discuss a transfer? Like. To me, it's like, okay, now we know better.
We should, see, I never thought the rules that way, I thought the rule was it had to be summed up by the last year, not at any given point.
So.
I don't know where the money will come from to transfer it.
So I'm wondering. Well, and we don't wanna do it. Every week either, so should we assess our CDs? And. Have a long-term plan? Or. Or just reassess next week of dates, balances. The whole thing.
I'm not here next week.
Or I mean, the, the next week.
Um.
I guess I just wanted your opinion since. We learned, we learned that.
I mean, they're getting, they're getting so much better. Than, than what they were, but. But here's the, the shuffle, the shuffle game is. If both of you have two funds that's tied to sales tax, the money comes in to one fund. And then that money gets divvied out to both of those funds. So. If now we have to cover those two funds. With another fund. You're moving. From the reserve fund to those two. And then from the sales tax fund. Into the reserve fund. That's not how the statute or the, the. Resolutions laid out that you approved, it has to go into those two funds, so.
So should we meet with the department heads and talk about expenditures instead?
Well. I mean, that could be good, but like she was saying, you, you're gonna have to pay the trash bill, so what are you gonna do if you don't pay the trash bill?
Right?
I, she kinda alluded, it's gonna take a while to get out of this, so I don't think that we. Probably should be a reactionary thing like, this week, we have to do something.
I just.
Let's think this through.
Yep.
And.
Make sure we have a plan of what that looks like, so. That we're all aware. You know, what is our timeline to think this through and get it corrected so that?
By the end of the lot, for her.
Okay. So we can put it on maybe the twenty second. We'll put it on the agenda for the twenty second.
It has a proposal of what that looks like and how to correct it.
Hey. Do you want that call?
Fun balance discussion, maybe? And I, um, do I have a couple minutes to talk about something else we said?
Yep.
Okay, so. Spur of the moment, I was caught off guard, but the more now that I've taken a step out of here and can collect my thoughts about it. She was worried about. The six million dollars in general. Okay. So I brought the computer up there and I showed her that a large chunk of that came through the June distribution. That's the largest distribution in the year. And she had said, there's many departments that make up the general, right, you have a general budget. Those departments take money to fund, fund the budget. So the money is transferred from the tax fund to the general fund to cover those budgets. It does that every, every distribution, so June just happens to be the largest one. So they're the large chunk in June that gets distributed from the taxing part. So that's why there's cash in there.
And how often is that distribution?
There's five a year. January, March, June, October.
Yeah, I, I wasn't confused about it because we've been through this enough and that's why I said, well, we've. This has been, it's been seven months.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Am I wrong in thinking that? That's tax.
It is tax.
Collect with money.
So it's just distributed to the, the general levy to fund what we said we were levying.
Five times a year, right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't, it made sense to me, but I'm not an accountant, so I had to, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, so if there was. There was two hundred thousand in there, we would be in all water. There is no money to fund any of it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, she.
I don't know why I didn't take it out at the moment, but.
She acted as if we should have. What, fund for every department? I mean, is that? Instead of one general. And then you feed out of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, she flirted as.
It's working how it should be working.
The distributions go in five times a year.
Yes.
And they're larger because you haven't pulled all the budgets out of them. And so when she looks at the end of the year and sees two hundred and fifty thousand, it's cause we're at the end and all the budgets have been. And so that would be what would be rolled to reserve or to offset.
Right, because typically you only want to levy what you're going to spend, you don't want. A lot of cushion unless you're expecting.
Yep. No, that don't really make sense. You pronounce it Q?
Q.
Yes, okay. Awesome, well, if you're good, um, we're running ahead of schedule, but, um, you're fine to get going, alright. So I would like to introduce Toby Coon, um, from K D H E Waste. Uh, for a waste management discussion, so thank you so much for coming, you can come up here, um, under the microphone and.
Do you have a preference, I said?
Just right there is good and yeah. Just. Thank you for coming to visit with us and talk about the programs you can, um, help us hopefully. Uh, kind of mitigate some of our nuisance. Issues.
Sure. Well, thank you, my name is Toby Coon, I'm with Kansas Department of Health and Environment Bureau Waste Management. It is a pleasure to be here today to visit with you about the legal dump program. Um, it's one of the few programs in the state of Kansas, um, where it's at the consent of a city or county. Uh, with my program, the legal dump program, we cannot come into your county and mandate that you will participate. Um, by state statute that enacted it, it's at the consent of the local governing body. Uh, so this is something that if you don't want to participate, K D H E can't make you. Um, what the program does is it deals with illegal accumulation of solid waste. Um, or legal dumping, open dumping, it has several different names, but it's basically, it all comes down to an illegal accumulation of solid waste on a property. There's many ways that it can get there, whether it's from someone bringing it into the property. The public dumping in a, in a site that's not authorized, you know, landfill. Um, however it gets there, we can work with the county to get it off. Uh, by state statute, the way the program works is we can spend up to ten thousand dollars per site from K D H E. Uh, depending on how large the property is, how many acres it is, how much waste is there, we do have some flexibility. Into breaking it up into multiple sites and everything, so for instance, if you have. Um, like a, you know, property that has, you know, it's two lots essentially. Uh, we can break it up into, into two different, you know, um. Two different sites for our program, you know, so that way there'd be more funding available.
It's good to know.
It is a seventy five, twenty five percent match, uh, seventy five percent of the cost comes from K D H E and twenty five percent is from, from the county in your case. The twenty five percent match is usually met by in-kind services. Basically, what we normally do is we utilize, um, your public works department, road and bridge department, whatever name you know it might have. Uh, to end county employees to actually do the work, uh, cause we reimburse at FEMA rates for employees, which is time and a half. And also FEMA rates for equipment, and we do have things like mobilization fees. Small equipment, you know, fees, you know, those type of things, um. In my experience doing this for six years. Um, I've never had a situation where a city or county has not been able to meet their twenty five percent by using their equipment. So in essence, the program does not cost anything out of pocket because all of the. Disposal fees, um, I don't know if your county has a local landfill that's run by the county and stuff. We can even include, you know, the, the waste being held there and employees there processing the waste. And, you know, we can include their time and equipment as well, you know, into the program for it. The only time that it does come sometimes out of pocket is if a. Local governing body decides to hire a contractor. Uh, in some cases, they go out for bids, uh, they hire some company to come in, you know, to do the work. And, you know, sometimes those costs, you know, there's not enough twenty five percent in kind, so it would cost, you know, some, you know, for the county, you know, if we did it that way. Scheduling is very, you know, is flexible with, uh, with my time and also with the county, basically, once we get through all the paperwork. Um, we can figure out, you know, a time of the year that works best, cause generally we do, uh, the contract, like we do the contract now, it'd be until. It'd be until June thirtieth the next year, so. Thank you for saving our. One of the big advantages to the program is, is that K D H E, you know, we handle all the contact with the property owner. We send out all the notices. And if we have to, to get legal access to property to do the cleanup, we either get the consent or we do administrative order. Uh, so basically there's, uh, you know, your county attorney would review some of the paperwork that we would have to enter into a contract, you know, to be able to, you know, to do the cleanup. But they're not gonna be prosecuting a case in your district court, they're not gonna be spending a lot of time. If the person does contest administrative order, that would be done in Topeka with K D H E staff attorneys and myself, it's not something that the county would necessarily be involved in. Um, it does save you, you know, a, a lot of bit, you know, quite a bit of paperwork because we do have the process, you know, kind of streamlined. As far as, you know, working with the property owner, making contact with them, you don't have staff that's constantly involved checking on the site, see what progress they're trying to do. Um, my approach has always been doing this program is I try to gain voluntary compliance first. Um, you know, I'll meet with the property owner, explain to them what the regulations are, what they're in violation of, and how they need to come back into compliance. By trying to do voluntary compliance, it, it does ultimately save the state and it saves the county any money. If we can get the person to actually do the work themselves, get everything cleaned up at their own expense. To come in, you know, within, within our regulations. Um, it, it works very well on about sixty percent, you know, of the, of the referrals I get across the state. Um, other times, you know, the voluntary compliance might not work, so we might, you know, do a voluntary assisted compliance. And sometimes that involves, um, doing a roll-off where the county provides a roll-off for the person to throw all the trash themselves into the roll-off. And then, you know, so we're not bringing all the heavy equipment in, all the employees in to actually do the work. Um, and sometimes, you know, we do bring the equipment in at the end, maybe to help them with some of the larger items, or sometimes we do the full cleanup. Under their consent, you know, under voluntary. Uh, the last method that, you know, that we don't, we, we try not to pursue very often would be what's called administrative order, that's the enforcement action. Uh, that's when the person says, you can't tell me what to do, we're not, I'm not gonna do it, I'm not gonna come into compliance. Um, we do what's called administrative order, which gives, um, K D H E and our legal representatives the right to come on the property, assess his fees and penalties. You know, for us to be able to actually do the work and stuff. Generally, you know, my experience in, you know, doing this for a while now, I only do maybe one or two of those across the state per year. And stuff, so, you know, w- we try to do it on a voluntary basis as much as we can, we give them time. Um, under the voluntary approach. Most of these sites didn't happen overnight, some of these sites maybe take months, years, even decades in my experience, so if I work with them. And they're making progress, I'll keep working with them, you know, I'll give them up to six, seven months, as long as they're making good verified progress. Everything that comes off that property has to go to a permitted facility to make sure it's not being dumped someplace else, or they're just not stashing it on another property. So anything that comes off, they have to provide receipts from either, uh, like metal recycler or the landfill, so I can verify where that waste is going. Um, and that's all handled by me, that's nothing that your staff has to do. Um, you know, cause with, even with our paperwork, I provide you. You know, all the paperwork that we need, you know, to, if we're gonna spend money. And that's something that we generally don't know until maybe about two or three months after I start working the site. And stuff, to get K D H E officially involved. Uh, we have an illegal dump notification form, you know, that the county signs, you know, signs and would submit back to us, that just gives us our consent that's required by state statute. For me to actually start, you know, talking to the property owner to start working that site. And then depending on how it goes, I stay in contact with whoever you. And then depending on how it goes, I stay in contact with whoever you establishes my contact, you know, with the county, whether it's the clerk or whether it's somebody else. Um, any letter I send out, um, I'll give them monthly updates, you know, just via email normally. And just let them know what's happening with the program and, you know, where we're looking. If we do spend money, we do have some paperwork that we have to, uh, do, the county has to pass a resolution. I have a copy of those that, you know, the other counties have done. Um, we enter a contract, which is a pretty much standard KDHE contract that your attorney will probably want to review. And stuff and then, but that's all stuff that's generated by, by KDHE, it's nothing that your staff has to generate. The only thing that they have to do, uh, basically when it comes to the paperwork wise is, you know, tell me what kind of equipment they want to use, if we're gonna do the cleanup and, and about how much they get paid. You know, type thing, how many employees are gonna use. Uh, whenever we do a cleanup, I'm on site the entire time the crew is working. I don't tell the crew how to run their equipment, uh, if they have questions, I can give them advice, I'm looking for hazardous waste, um, household hazardous waste. Things that are not considered solid waste, I make all those determinations, plus I also work with the property owner as well. Uh, so whenever they're on site working, I will be there. And doesn't matter what time they want to start, what time they want to end, I'm on county time at that point as far as, you know, what works best for, for them, so. In extreme cases, if we do have to do administrative order with a non-cooperative property owner. There are times where we do need law enforcement on standby, you know, at the property as well, you know, that's rare, but sometimes it does happen. And, and those costs will be reimbursed, you know, through a contract between KDHE and the county. I said a lot in a short period of time. So, questions?
Well, I guess my question, uh, it all sounds good to me, uh. On specific sites, can you, like, compartmentalize, like, can you say? Okay, the, the property owner is very agreeable and compliant with this section, so we're gonna tackle that. In this. You know, in this one, uh, event, and we're not gonna deal with the rest. Can you do that? Is that possible to do, to pick? Not different sites, just one site, but multiple, you know, issues with that property, but. See, you know, I read some of this and I thought, you know, um, specific property owners might have. A portion that they are very eager to get cleaned up and are compliant, wanna be compliant. And it, to my thought is if we can bring you in on part of that. Uh, and, and it'll save us money, it'll get you involved, um, is that possible to do something like that?
Uh, normally whenever I do a site, um, it, um, cause our regulations only deal with solid waste. So we don't tear down houses, we don't tear down buildings, we don't, uh, clean up like a fire damaged building. You know, none of those are, you know, part of the program, same thing with vehicles, you know, we actually don't regulate vehicles as far as junkyards, that's through KDOT in the state of Kansas. Um, so if we're gonna do a site, um, our ultimate goal is, is to remove all the solid waste that's on the property. And so if they have a large section of solid waste, maybe on the east side. And they also have a lot on the west side, but they don't want us touching anything on the west side, that's not really, you know, an option. Because we, we are, uh, banned by state statute, we can only spend money on the site once. So like if we do, you know, whatever property and we only do half of it. And then, you know, they come back and they're adding to the site that we didn't do, we can never come back to that property, at least KDHE cannot, you know, spend money on that site again. So what I try to do to balance that is try to work with the property owner. Because they will have, you know, three or four months, you know, from the time, from the time I make my first, you know, site visit to work with them. For them to be able to identify what items of value, to be able to separate some things out, you know, like if, if they have a bunch of scrap metal mixed in with solid waste. They're, they're gonna have every opportunity to remove all that scrap metal, haul it to a recycler, you know, and keep, and keep, and send me the receipts. You know, they can just take a picture of it and I'll give them myself my state cellphone number and they text me, you know, the picture, so that way. There's plenty of time, because this isn't gonna be a process where, you know, they're gonna get one week notice and then we're gonna be there. Because by the time, you know, for me to give them opportunity to work the site before we come on it, by the time we do the paperwork, I mean, it's gonna be about three or four months at the quickest. And that, that's assuming they give us consent. If it's more of the administrative side as far as administrative order, the enforcement, then that's gonna take a little bit longer usually to do the paperwork. But for, for our preference through KDHE, if there's solid waste on the property, we're gonna do all the solid waste when we're there.
So just to summarize the process then, if. Signing the resolution or starting the program within Atchison County, there's no cost to that, it's just a paperwork contract with KDHE. And then, once that's formulated, it basically just gives us both the, the head nod that yes, we wanna explore this. And then beyond that, we identify from the properties that have been turned in to us. Um, for nuisances, whether or not they qualify, and then at that moment, it's the consent of the local governing body. Per property that fits the criteria, because like for mine, uh, specifically, I feel like many of them would be voluntarily. They just don't have the means, and so this program, when you first explained it to me, felt wonderful. Because many of them ask, like, are there any programs to help us, you know, with the monetary cleanup? Because it's not that they don't want to, but to your point of generational or other means of how it got there, now they're kind of stuck, so, um. Really, it's just that initial commitment, if we determine this is a good fit, and then beyond that, it would be each individual property. Separate, right?
Correct, correct, um, basically for, for each property that the county would like for us to work. And, you know, I, I can't do, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, because, um, I'm the only one that runs this program and I cover the entire state, so I have a hundred and five counties. And I do have limited funding and limited availability and stuff, so I do have to spread the money out. Uh, depending on, you know, how many sites, you know, there are and stuff, we can take a look at them. Uh, I've done this long enough that I have a pretty good idea of like how much it would cost, cause I always base everything off of. Uh, worst case scenario, that we along with the county have to be on site removing all the trash, you know, what do I think that's gonna cost and everything, so. Um, you know, I, I can't give you a specific dollar amount as far as what's allotted. But to get, you know, KDHE involved is, you know, we can take a look at some of the sites, um, you know, identify two or three of them. And then there's just the legal dump notification form, I have paper copies, I can also send you electronic version. That's the first thing that the county has to do. We don't do any of the resolutions or contracts or anything until we know that we're actually gonna spend money. So if, for instance, if it's a voluntary and the, uh, property owner has the means. We never do a contract, because there's never gonna be any money exchanging hands, you know, from KDHE back to the county, so no resolution would have to be passed either. And stuff, so it, it's just the simple illegal dump notification form that you're asking us to take a look at it, it's not a commitment, you know, for funding. Now, I prefer if, if the county does, you know, want these properties cleaned up, that I don't wanna spend four or five months trying to do it. And then we need to get, spend money to finish it up or whatever the case, and then have the county go, nah, we don't really wanna do that. You know, because that's, you know, one of those resource, you know, issues, you know, for us. You know, is, is spending so much time and then not going forward with actually finishing it. But there is no obligation by signing that legal dump notification form or request form. You know, that it doesn't, you know, uh, it's not legal commitment between KDHE and the county.
Okay, and speaking of those timelines, because it is a collaborative effort with county staff and resources. Um, can you walk me through an example of that? So say we go out and we qualify a site and we're like, okay, that's the site we're gonna start. Um, and we sign with you, then your first step is to talk to them and say, this is what we can offer you, we'll give you four to five months or whatever. To clean it up and, and to get situated, and then do you communicate with, cause you had mentioned Public Works or Road and Bridge. And speaking of your time and effort being, um, important, so if you say from today, September fifth is my day, and this is what we're doing. You just expect the counties that do the in-kind services to be there when you, when you set up your time, is that usually how it works?
Um, okay, so like i- i- if you give me the legal dump notification form, you know, one of the first things I'll do is I'll try to contact the property owner. If you have a phone number for the person, that's fantastic, I'll try to reach out, I'm on phone. And then I'll follow it up with a letter and I'll set up my first site visit with them. If I don't have a phone number and know the ways to contact, then I send out a letter, which is the notification letter that they have thirty days to come into compliance. And that also I wanna set up a meeting with them and I'll give them like a timeframe of, you know, a couple of days, you know, type stuff that I'll be either in this area. Or I'd be available to meet with them. I can meet with them at nine o'clock in the morning and I can meet with them at eight o'clock at night, you know, my schedule is flexible when it comes to that. Because, you know, the people that work, you wanna be able to, you know, accommodate them without them to take vacation time or leave time. Um, and then, so after that initial meeting, that's when the first thirty days will start and stuff. Um, and then after those thirty days, somewhere in that neighborhood, you know, give me, give or take a few days. Um, I will do another site visit to see what their progress has been, see if they've turned in any receipts, if they've done anything with recycling. And then if they're making progress, I'll give them another thirty days, you know, I'll continue the extensions on the voluntary compliance as long as they're making good progress. You know, taking one trash sack off the property in thirty days i- is not gonna cut it. Because then we have what's called a letter of warning, which is the next step in the enforcement process, where then they'll have, you know, thirty days to come into compliance under the letter of warning. Then if they don't come into compliance again after that, then, you know, is when we normally proceed to the administrative order. Because one of the things that I'll talk with the people on the first site visit is, do they have the means, are they capable of, of doing this? Um, if they don't have the means, uh, if they don't have the financial means or physical means, you know, those type of things. We do have what's called inability to pay guidelines. They will be given the option, uh, filling out some financial information to determine if they do have the, you know, ability to pay for the costs. Uh, that is all handled through KDHE fiscal, um, u- using EPA property guidelines. Um, you know, they mail all the paperwork back, you know, um, I turn it over, you know, they run it through their computer system and then they make. You know, the determination, I'll get a memo back whether they qualify or they don't. If they, if they do qualify for the inability to pay, then we can no longer seek reimbursement against them. You know, for any of the cleanup costs. Uh, in our contract, that it also prohibits the county from seeking any reimbursement against them as well. Because KDHE controls the reimbursement under the program. If they don't qualify, then we will seek reimbursement, you know, from the property owner, you know, to come back, you know, uh, to, to recover the costs. And that's all handled by our legal staff and collections, you know, through the state.
The cost of the, of the ten thousand?
Uh, uh, the cost of the total cleanup. The actual cost.
Do you ever get into situations where you get into something much bigger than what it just looked like it was solid waste? But then you get in there and maybe be like a chemical or a brownfield situation, which would cost much more than the ten thousand, and then who handles that?
Um, i- if it gets into, you know, like if it's a brownfield situation or something like that, then that would be turned over to, a- after the solid waste was removed, that would be turned over to the. To a different bureau, you know, I'd be the BER, you know, the environmental remediation and stuff. It wouldn't be handled through the legal dump program, because I'm restricted by only doing, you know, what's cons- what's considered solid waste. You know, any household hazardous waste that comes up. Um, it, you know, depending on what hazardous waste is or the quantity, you know, we have other programs that can help offset this cost for those chemicals. Cause we do have an orphan hazard, orphan hazardous waste program. Um, we do have some HHW money that we can use as well, same thing with tires, you know, we have some orphan tire money that we can use for that program as well. So, um, i- it's kind of a unique thing, because I do, I do work in other programs as well. In, in a, in conjunction with the legal dump program, so if we do run into, you know, situation where we are. You know, getting close to that ten thousand dollar limit and, you know, we discovered there's a whole bunch of tires, for instance. You know, we do have other funding through other programs that we can use to supplement as well.
But with all the funding on these programs, you have to qualify based on your income?
Um, those, uh, they're like the orphan has waste or, and then the orphan tire program, that's a separate programs and stuff. And there is no qualifications based on income of the property owner.
But the illegal dump program with ten thousand, there is.
Right, be- because the, the qualification is only for reimbursement. It doesn't mean that we can't, you know, work the program if they qualify or don't, we can still do it. The, it just whether on, whether they're gonna be held accountable for the reimbursement or not. Now, s- you know, about fifty percent of the people, you know, fail to return the paperwork and stuff, they refuse to do it.
Well, and that's what I'm just trying to understand, putting myself in a property owner, if I have a property and you come to me and say have this illegal dump program for ten thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that can help you clean up. And I'm like, okay, that's great, so we start the paperwork and I, and then you clean it up and then I get a bill.
Right, they will know upfront, because it also, it also determines whether the property owner is the responsible party.
Okay.
And stuff, um, if the, if, if the property owner is the responsible party, who is bringing the waste back on. You know, or bringing the waste onto their property or allowing other people, you know, to dump on their property, you know, for either in-kind services or payment. Or, or just allowing people to do it, you know, they're gonna be determined, that's one of the things I'll look at, is who is the responsible party. Um, you know, a, a lot of times when you mention the generational, it might have been mom and dad's property for fifty years. And, you know, either mom or dad, you know, just brought all this stuff in over all these years and then they both died and now. Son or daughter's inherited this property, now there's all this waste. Uh, the son or daughter that currently owns the property would not be considered the responsible party, so we would not go after them for reimbursement.
Okay.
We only go after the responsible parties.
Okay, and so you qualify that with the, does that have situations like that?
Right, that would be one of those situations that we would look at, you know, to see. Um, you know, an example would be, say you have an absentee property owner who lives someplace in the country. People start dumping all their trash out there. Well, you know, he comes back after being gone for two years and it's like, there's thirty tons of trash out on their property, well, how did this get here? If we can make any determinations as far as who the responsible parties are. We will, you know, go after them through an enforcement action for reimbursement of those costs, but we would not hold the property owner liable, you know, for those costs. Now, if he was having payment, you know, for people to dump out there in his ravine, whatever the case may be, then he will be held, you know, responsible in that case. It's kind of a lot to, you know, kind of, you know, wrap your head around as far as who's responsible, who's not, you know, are we gonna seek reimbursement from them or not? Um, but if it's, if it's a general property owner who has brought all the waste themselves. And, you know, they make, you know, any kind of, you know, declaration of poverty or that they can't afford to do it, then they will be afforded the opportunity, you know, to complete the paperwork. And then if they qualify, w- we, we simply cannot go out for, for reimbursement, you know, the cost. So we can still do all the work, you know, and stuff, but, you know, it's not, it's nothing that we can collect on them for it.
Have you had success in other counties around us?
Um, you know, uh, a lot of everything I've done, I, I've done some voluntary, you know, ones, um, you know, kind of. I, I've done some work in Kansas City, Wyandotte County. Um, you know, I've done some other ones and, you know, some of the other counties a little bit farther to the west. But it seems like the majority of my sites are, you know, southeast, south central, southwest, north central, you know, more in that part of the state. But I know I'm meeting with Donovan County next week.
Yeah.
So. It's one of those programs that we don't advertise a lot, just for the simple fact that, you know, we do have limited funding and limited availability. And, you know, trying to cover all the entire state with one person is pretty tough, you know.
Well, you definitely piqued my interest when you said there's assistance, because I can replay it in my head of one of my folks asking, like, is there anything to help me with this? Cause the problem was created by someone else, not himself, so, um, I think that would be.
And it's a situation that if the county is wanting to clean up these properties. Uh, cause a lot of cities and counties, you know, have the ordinances in place where they can actually do the work themselves, where they can do the abatements. Well, if you do it by yourself, that's all your staff time, that's all your attorney time for the court. And then that's all your, you know, equipment and manpower time, you know, to actually go on the property, you know, to do the work. Well, we have all that already in place through KDHE. Where, you know, the process is somewhat streamlined, we have all the paperwork, uh, if any of the legal issues that's handled through KDHE and our staff. Um, you know, so at least this way, you're getting reimbursed for the majority of your costs. So, I mean, your employees will be working that day, irregardless whether they're doing a cleanup. But this way, they're being paid at, you know, the county is being paid, reimbursed at time and a half, you know, for them to actually be doing this work, whether it's one day or five days. I've done sites that are as small as a couple tons and the largest one I've done to date, it was nine hundred and forty-three tons. I've just done several in the last, you know, last couple of weeks, that were in the fifty to seventy ton range on, on property.
I definitely feel like we would have a couple, um, right off the top of my head, that would be qualified and maybe. Be appreciative of some assistance, um, so we can. Do you guys have any other questions for him before we go on a little tour and show him a couple of them?
No.
Okay, uh, just one last thing I wanna add is that the property will not be a home and garden TV property when we're done. You know, the, the expectation is, you know, we're not gonna. You know, the, the expectation is, you know, we're not gonna cut the grass, we're not gonna fix the fences, you know, I can't enforce. Any type of, you know, ordinances or resolutions that the county has as far as, you know, those, I can only deal with state statute regulations. And that's, you know, everything through KDHE, as far as like any waste, you know, those type of things. And people are allowed to have stuff on their property, not everything on the property is solid waste. So only the things that we deem to be solid waste is what's gonna be removed. I mean, you know, sometimes you'll get, I'll get a complaint after the fact, well, you left him six barbecue girls. Well, they were all in working order. Well, it looks horrible. Well, I, I, I don't deal with appearance, I deal with what's considered solid waste. So sometimes, you know, there is a little bit, you know, especially with the public being involved, well, why didn't you take all that other stuff? Well, it all has value and all has uses, how much people wanna have outside, that's up to the, you know, city or county codes, you know, to regulate if it's not solid waste.
And an example of solid waste that would be recycled would be, because like not working appliances or, okay.
Yeah, like, you know, cause we, we will try to do everything we can, you know, to recycle it, if there is metal, you know, mixed in and stuff. We, we will do everything we can, you know, to recycle that. Uh but I also do have to weigh the benefit of the costs versus what, what the recycling fees, you know, are going to be. Um, we try to do, you know, the majority of the work using equipment, you know, skid steers, excavators, mini excavators, you know, loaders, those type of things. Um because if you have a lot of solid waste on a property, you don't want, you know, you don't want your employees digging in there with their hands trying to do stuff. So, I mean, we, we try to do, um, you know, as much as we can with the equipment. Now, there might be some raking when you get close to a building and stuff, you know, maybe pull stuff away. But it just depends on how good your, you, you know, your operators are, you know, how comfortable they feel, cause we don't want anything damaged, you know, we don't want the property damaged. But we, we just really try to limit how much handwork we have to do.
All right, guys, how many other?
Uh, this is Martha, she's with Northeast Kansas Environmental Service, do you know? All right, well, I know you said you're going to Donovan County next week, they're based in Donovan County, so I just wanted to see if you had made connection.
Yes.
She's helped us identify properties and we'll use them, uh we're part of the, how many counties do we have?
Five.
Five.
So we're going, I was gonna ask you guys, um do we want to recess and then come back or adjourn? The only reason I'm asking is there is some unfinished business and survey questions are in our info items, which we talked about a little bit this morning. So if we feel like we're good until next week, um I just didn't know how much time.
The only item left, I, I did write discussed during nine AM workshop under survey questions and R and R info items. But I mean, so the only, that was the only item that leaves is that unpermitted structure move, which we can move to next week if you want, so just close or if you wanna come.
Probably not.
Yeah, so then I would just look for a motion to adjourn, um and we are going to go with the county clerk. Um and Mr. Coon on a tour of a few of our properties that could uh qualify for the assistance program at KDHE. Moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Thank you very much for your time, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, does anybody want business cards?